We'll go ahead and start with the Lord's Prayer, if you would join me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, our power, and glory forever. Amen. Okay, if you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gillig. I appreciate that. So as far as our agenda goes here today, we've got the pledge and the invocation done. Thank you for doing that. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuno. Councilman Jones. Councilman Leopard. Councilman Perry.
Here.
Councilman Schuff.
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is a special meeting announcement. This is a notice and in compliance with Charter Section 3.09B to announce a special meeting of Tiffin City Council on Monday, December 28th, 2020, 6:30 PM, to be held via Zoom platform for consideration to discuss and pass proposed ordinance 20-122 for the 2021 budget and any other business that may be considered. All right, scrolling down my screen here, bear with me. All right, does anyone have any committee reports? Okay. Anything that we should discuss here during committee, the whole, Brent, do you think would now be a good time to get into what Councilman Leopard had recommended?
Sure, if you would like to raise the question that Councilman Leopard had, go right ahead.
He, Councilman Leopard, as the mayor said earlier before we started the meeting, is ill and not feeling well. I wish him and Councilman Fodis speedy recovery and hopefully get back to normal here soon. He was to have a committee report tonight following this meeting, but he is not able to make it, obviously. He had asked me to pass that message on to Councilman Jones or Councilwoman Yanatuno to see if they would head up the meeting. Obviously, we don't have either one of them on here at this point, so what would you recommend, Law Director?
Well, first, Councilman Jones did join the meeting, but the committee, if the committee members are Councilwoman Yanatuno, Councilman Jones, and Councilman Leopard, two out of three are not here, and you need a quorum. You need two of the three to hold a meeting, so I don't think that you can hold the meeting this evening. It'll have to be rescheduled for another time.
Okay, is there anything that we need to do? Do we need to announce that it'll be rescheduled or postponed till a later date? Is there any protocol for that that you recommend?
Yeah, that's fine. You can announce as part of this meeting, and that it'll be rescheduled to a future date after you consult with the committee chair, Councilman Leopard.
Okay, thank you, Law Director. Anything else here that we would need to discuss here for the committee of the whole? All right, I'm gonna go into reports of the officers. Senator Aaron Demots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really do not have a whole lot to report since we just met less than a week ago. I hope everyone had a very good Christmas. The only thing I have is this evening, your last meeting, we have the little commendation for you as well, just like we had gotten for Police Chief Stevens. So we want to thank you for all of your years of service, Councilman Schuff. This is in grateful appreciation for your dedicated service, Tyler Schuff, Tiffin, Ohio Councilman-at-Large, City of Tiffin. And you began, if we have it correct, July 21st, 2008, and you will leave office at, I believe, midnight on December 31st of 2020, as you assume the office of Seneca County Commissioner. I know you have your swearing-in ceremony later this week, so we wish you the absolute very best. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I was happy and proud to have endorsed you in the election when you ran for higher office. Our loss here at City Hall and on City Council is the county's gain, and I am hopeful that we'll be working together for years, if not decades, to come, Commissioner Schuff.
Thank you, Mayor. That means a lot. It's been a great experience. I know, and I wholeheartedly feel the city's in great hands. We've got a great council, an awesome administration, a great mayor. I think everyone's gonna continue to do great things. It's been honestly just a privilege to be a part of everything that's going on in the community during my time, our time. It's been one of the best experiences of my life, and I care about all of you very much, so it's I'm gonna miss every single one of you, but I'll still be here. I'll just be in a different building down the street, but looking forward to working with everyone in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
That is all I had this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. It means a lot. Anything from the Clerk of Council, Ann Forst? Thank you, Ann. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman, is she on?
I'm here. No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you. First, Tyler, I want to thank you for your service. You know, over the years, you've been very dedicated to the people of Tiffin. I always appreciated your ability to think through the issues in a way that might be a little creative and kind of help us look at an issue in a different way to solve a problem. And that's a very useful skill that you have, and I'm sure that'll be used well for county business.
Thank you, Brent. That means a lot. It's it's gonna be hard going. I'm excited for the new journey, the new adventure. Now, I have comments that I made for every single person here on council. Like I said, I'd like to share some of those at the next meeting, if you guys will allow me, but that that means a lot, and it's been a privilege working with you as well.
Well, thank you. And I do have a few procedural comments about tonight's meeting, just so that you follow a procedure that I would understand that you would. Ordinance 20-122 is the budget ordinance for 2021, and in your packet is a new Exhibit A. So it's updated with most recent information from the Finance Director. So that is what should be included in the ordinance, so that means that you will need to amend ordinance 20-122 by substituting the new Exhibit A into that ordinance, replacing the Exhibit A that was used when the ordinance was introduced. So that would be under motions. You should amend ordinance 20-122.
Okay.
Ordinance 20-137 is an ordinance that changes the zoning code in various ways, mostly clarifications to make sure that there's consistency throughout. One thing we didn't do at the last meeting, which we should, is we should start the charter required process for considering a zoning-related matter, which means that you need to table that ordinance to allow for the joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. So it would be appropriate if you would table that ordinance tonight, or you could do it at your next meeting before the second reading is held. But you do need to take some action to allow for that joint public hearing. And then also, the joint public hearing needs to be called, and I've talked or emailed or texted with Rich Vogt and Tyler Schuff, and it would seem appropriate that that joint public hearing would be held at 7 o'clock at your second meeting in January, which would be January the 19th, which is a Tuesday because it's after Martin Luther King Day. So I've asked, and I said it'd be appropriate for, recommended to Council President Pro Tem Schuff to call that joint public hearing for the 19th at 7 o'clock. Matt Watson is aware of that, and he can make contact with the Planning Commission members, so they also attend that meeting. The last, the last item I have is ordinance 20-142 is an item of legislation to make sure that we, we take some action with the current year's budget before year end. And so it was proposed, and I believe that the Finance Director would want that introduced and passed this evening, if at all possible. However, I see only five members of council here this evening, and to suspend the three reading rule, we would need to have six vote in suspension. So I guess I have a question for the Finance Director, and I think I know the answer is that really we need to take this action this year, in this calendar year, and if that's the case, then unfortunately, that means that we would need to have another special meeting scheduled for later this week, at which time hopefully there could be six members of council in attendance to suspend the three reading rule and vote on passage. Kathy, do you have any comments about the necessity of this ordinance, especially in the eyes of the auditors who may review whether this action was done in the calendar year?
Yes, I was hoping to have it suspended and passed. We did actually receive the funds. I think it was at the end of last week, so it would be better accounting to show the expense in the same year that we received the funds.
So, Mr. President, it might be appropriate, given that explanation, to see if there is a time later this week that all the members that are in attendance at tonight's meeting could also attend, and hopefully this would be a very brief meeting, and then also hope that there would be one of the other two council members in attendance.
What works best for everybody's, one day better than another. We'll have to give it, we'll have to put it out here on notice, House Thursday Look for Everyone for Friday.
Well, Friday is next year.
Oh, geez. Yeah, Thursday. Thank you, Brent.
Wednesday, Thursday.
What's the will of council? Does anybody have a day that they cannot do?
Nope, I'm available.
Um, for me, it just depends, and I'm sure for Danny too. It just depends on the time we're thinking.
Could we do a Thursday at 6:30? Would everybody be freed up by that?
No.
Would Wednesday?
Wednesday works for me.
I can do Wednesday if it's like around, like 5:00 or 5:30.
Does it work for you, Councilman Perry?
Yeah, it does.
Um, one question I have for the Law Director, Councilman Leopard just texted me and said if it allows us to move things forward, he would sign in this evening if it's not too late for him to join the meeting. That's.
Yeah, yes, it would, it would work. And you know, I think the rule is that it has to do before the legislation, get to the legislation. So if he could sign in, then he could vote this evening, and it would avoid yeah, extra meat.
For those members of the public that didn't hear the very beginning, Councilman Leopard and Councilwoman Yanatuno are both ill this evening. That's why we don't have our normal amount of council members. Councilman Leopard did say that if we absolutely needed him for a vote, that he would do his best to sign in for a short time, so that's what he had told me to text him if we absolutely needed him. We had hoped to avoid it because of multiple council members sick. More unfortunately, we had to send him a text, so he will be joining our meeting, he said, here in the next few minutes, as soon as he can get logged in. So I guess you have to need that meeting then, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank Councilman Leopard when he gets here. We all owe him.
Absolutely. I don't see him on yet. We'll give him a few more minutes here.
Any other items of business that we could discuss while we wait on him? Were there any other ordinances that needed suspended this evening, Kathy or Brent?
I believe that's the only one that I had was 142.
Yeah, Councilman, or President Schuff, you could call that special or the joint public hearing on January the 19th at 7 o'clock for consideration of ordinance 20-137.
All right, on advisement here of the council here and the Law Director, I'm going to call a Planning Commission meeting for January 19th at 7 o'clock PM for consideration of ordinance 20-137 and any other business that may come before the commission.
Yes, and that's a joint public hearing with council, City Council, and the Planning Commission.
Do I need to make that part of the motion?
It's not a motion. You can just call that.
Okay. And Brent, the one that the ordinance that needed tabled, you said was 20-137, correct?
That's right. Under motions, you could entertain a motion to table that ordinance.
Who signed that? Was that you, Councilman Gillig?
No, that was, it was Danny Perry.
Damn, okay, got it. Let's see if we have Councilman Leopard on yet. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we just intending to take action on ordinance 20-122 and possibly 21-37 and 21-42 tonight?
I'll leave that one for the Law Director.
I believe that it was the intention of council to also consider for third reading ordinances 20-123, 124, 125, 120, 132, and 134. All of those, other than the last one, which is the pay ordinance, all of those others deal with the 2021 budget for planning purposes, so it kind of follows suit with your passing the budget for the year. And then 134 is the pay ordinance for non-union employees, and it would be best to have that in place effective with the first of the year for the first pay period.
That answer your question, Councilman Gillig?
Yes, it does, Mr. President. Law Director, do we need to make a motion to have those read, or is that already kind of implied?
It is not. It's been the custom of council with special meetings under motions to introduce and move and second and pass a motion to identify the ordinances to be read at the meeting, at the special meeting.
Very good. And just to double check, that will be 21-22, 123, 124, 125, 132, and 134, and 130, 142.
And 142, yes, the.
Thank you very much.
See, we have Councilman Leopard on here with us now. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ann.
We have also written communications that should be read, Finance Director's request, because it ties in with the ordinance that's going to be presented.
All right, let's go through written communications here. I apologize, I'm bouncing back and forth between screens here.
Okay, under written communications, we have Finance Director's request for legislation number F-20-58 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to allow for the reporting of CARES Act coronavirus relief funds from Eden Township.
All right, I will give that legislation for F-20-58 to the Finance Committee. I see one more on there. Ann, do you see it?
No, that is the only one I have. But that request for legislation has the, has been presented under ordinance 20-142.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm
I know it's
trying, trying to read my emails on here and stuff too. I'm going through that.
Okay.
All right. Do you have that, Councilman Gillig, or can you take care of that for us?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. All right, oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step up to the podium or sign in, raise their hand since we're on the Zoom app, and direct your questions to the Council President, please.
We only have three people out there, so any of these who are in the attendee room, if you'd like to speak, click the feature that says Raise Hand, please, now. There are no hands of the three in there, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, motions. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move, first and foremost, that we amend ordinance 20-122 and that we amend the ordinance with the new Exhibit A that was presented by the Law Director earlier.
Thank you, Councilman Gillig. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, we have a motion and a second here to amend ordinance 20-122 and substitute the ordinance with the new Exhibit A. All right, can we take it to a vote?
Yes. Let's see. Councilwoman Boyle. Yes. Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
And Councilman Schuff?
Yes. Councilman Gillig's motion to amend 20-122 is passed by a vote of 6 to 0. Any other motions? Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to so move that we read and consider ordinance 20-122, 20-123, 20-124, 20-125, 20-132, 20-134, and 20-142, please.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to for ordinance 123, 120, 20-123, 124, 125, 132, 134, and 142. Any discussion? All right, Ann, if you want to call the vote.
Councilwoman Boyle. Yes. Gillig? Yes.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes. Councilman Gillig's motion passes at a vote of 6 to 0. Councilman Perry? You're on mute, Dan.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we table ordinance 20-137, so we can allow time for the joint public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Perry. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table 20-137. Could we call the vote on that, clerk?
Councilwoman Boyle. Yes. Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Schuff?
Yes. Councilman Perry's motion to table 20-137 passes at a vote of 6 to 0. Any other motions at this time? Can only see four screens at a time here, so if you guys need to speak up. I don't see any other motions at this time. Resolutions and ordinances?
There are no resolutions, Mr. President, so we'll pass to ordinances. There was me, amended ordinance number 20-122, annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and then December 31, 2021.
Thank you. Scroll through the screens here. Anyone like to make a motion? Councilman Gillig?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I would so move for the immediate passage of ordinance 20-122.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on 20-122? Councilman Leopard?
Should it be amended, ordinance number 20-122?
You are correct, yes. Should we change that motion, Law Director?
No, I don't think it's necessary. Just, you can just clarify for everyone that this is 122 as amended.
Okay. What we are voting on is the amended 20-122. Councilman Go, did you have your hand up?
No, Mr. President, but I would like to thank city administration and our department heads. This is a very complex process with probably many months of of negotiations and discussions and made all that more difficult with the financial uncertainty that's hung over pretty well the entire world in 2020. So just want to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you for your comments. Very true. All right, so we have a motion here and a second for for amended 20- ordinance 20-122. Could the clerk call the vote?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Schuff?
Yes. Motion to pass amended ordinance 20-122 passes on a vote of 6 to 0?
Ordinance number 20-123, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Sorry, you guys. That was the third reading of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move for the immediate passage of ordinance 20-123.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 20-123. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Okay, I see no hands. Uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Finance Director Kaufman, is this the, the annual transfer of the, of the funds from the general to the park department?
Yes, it is. This is for the two thousand twenty-one budget. We do a quarterly transfer.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? All right, see no hands. If the clerk would call the vote.
Councilwoman, uh, this is on the emergency, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Vote on the emergency passes by a vote of six to zero. Uh, if we could take a vote on the legislation for passage, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes. Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-three passes by a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one twenty-four introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the five fifty-two sewer revenue fund to the five fifty-seven combined sewer separation fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, we just heard the, um, reading of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-four. Councilman Gillig?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would so move for the immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-four.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to, uh, vote on the emergency of twenty dash one twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Seen any out there? The clerk would call the vote, please.
This is on the emergen- emergency, Mr. President. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the five fifty-two sewer, oh, I'm sorry, I wrote, I'm sorry. Okay, start again. On the emergency, uh, Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Shuck?
Yes. Emergency passes on a vote of six to zero. Uh, if we can get the vote, please, on the passage.
Yeah. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes. Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-four passes on a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one twenty-five introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds and payment of bond and loan in principal and interest and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-five.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for passage, um, of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones?
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, ordinance twenty dash one twenty-five, I'm looking on page two, and I circled a couple of these. And I guess I'm just confused on, like, item number six, the interest of sixty-one thousand on a seventy thousand principal. Item eight, twenty-one thousand interest on a ten thousand dollar principal. Item nine and ten is the same thing. Looks like the interest is more than a principal. Could someone explain that before I vote on this?
Kathy, would you be willing to answer Councilman Jones's question?
Sure. We have, um, special debt tables that we have that we were issued for these bond payments. And yes, the interest is more than the principal at some point. And then, once that principal is paid, then we go into paying more of the principal. Kind of just like, uh, like your home loan, you pay more interest before you get to your principal. And a lot of these are set up for several years. Um, so we're approving, we have, in order to pay these payments, we have to transfer money. So that's why we're, we're asking for passage of these. This is in the two thousand twenty-one budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions there, Councilman Jones? Okay. All right, where are we at here? All right, we had a motion and a second here for the passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty-five. Could we take a vote on the emergency?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes. Motion on the emergency passes by a vote of six to zero. Uh, take a vote on the passage of the legislation, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Shuck?
Yes. Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-five passes at a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty-two introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance approving the transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Improvements Fund to the three-three-eight, two thousand twelve, the two thousand twenty-one buyer vehicle fund in two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Anne. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, would like to ask for immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-two.
Can I get a second? Let's see here. Councilman Leppard?
Uh, I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion on ordinance twenty dash one thirty-two? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, is this a normal transfer or has this got something to do with the new fire truck that was purchased here in two thousand twenty?
You are right. It does involve the new fire truck and also, um, it is higher than we normally have. It's normally fifty thousand. We are so, also are making our final payment on the two thousand sixteen ambulance, so we needed to transfer an additional fifty thousand dollars in order to make those payments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other discussion? Seen no more hands. Um, Anne, if we could take a, uh, vote on the emergency, please?
Yes. Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Man Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Leppard?
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Shuck?
Yes. Emergency passes on a vote of six to zero. Let's, uh, take a vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance twenty dash one thirty-two passes by a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty-four introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending and restating ordinance number twenty dash sixty-eight, the city pay ordinance to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-four.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for, uh, passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-four. Is there any discussion on the legislation? No hands up. Uh, clerk, if you could call roll on the emergency?
Ben's got to stand up, Shuff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Councilman Gillig, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is foolish. I just, uh, uh, City Administrator Thornton and, uh, Councilman Leppard and Councilman Jones, can you remember, uh, minimum wage for your first job? Mine was five fifteen at Community Markets, the old Sack and Save.
No, I can't say I do remember, but I do remember working at the Tiffin Drive-In for a dollar an hour, and it was easy to figure out my gross pay. So I do remember that, but I don't remember the, anything else.
I remember, I remember I was twelve years old and I had to work my first week free to prove to the owner of the grocery store that I was able to handle the job.
That's a good point. Councilman Gillig, I was right there with you. I think I started out at five dollars an hour at, uh, Peacock's BP. Pumping gas, washing windows, and checking tire pressure. All right, um, we have a motion and a second here for ordinance twenty dash one thirty-four. Is there any more discussion? See no hands raised? Could we take a vote on the emergency, please?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes. Emergency passes on a vote of six to zero. Uh, ask for a vote on the passage of the legislation.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Shuck?
Yes. Ordinance twenty dash one thirty-four passes at a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one forty-two introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the two thousand twenty budget ordinance nineteen eighty-four to allow for the recording of CARES Act coronavirus relief funds from Eden Township.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to ask for suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one forty-two, uh, for reasons we'll talk about in discussion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Scroll through my screens here. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend the three reading rule for ordinance twenty dash one forty-two. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking over ordinance twenty dash one forty-two, and I'm going from memory here in two thousand twenty, but isn't the emergency always, and I want to say always, written into the ordinance before we suspended, or, at emergency? I'm trying to get some clarification here.
Law Director Howard?
Yes, um, for an ordinance that strictly appropriates funds by reason of a charter provision, it does not have to be an emergency. It goes into effect immediately upon adoption and signing by the mayor. So, um, the only time that you'll see an emergency clause in a budget-related ordinance might be if there's something more going on other than just appropriating funds for a particular line item. So if there's a transfer of money, um, something like that, or if there is an authorization to spend that money, um, to authorize a contract, something other, there might be an, an emergency. So that's why I know it gets a little confusing, but if it's something that's going to be direct, uh, strictly for the appropriating funds, it can go into effect, uh, immediately without the emergency clause.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, Law Director, Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We received, uh, the funds for this last week. Uh, therefore, it is, uh, imperative that we get that accounted for before the close of the two thousand twenty business year. And also very thankful to Councilman Leppard for being able to join us so we could get this suspended this evening.
Absolutely. All right, any other discussion? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we're in discussion mode, what is the background on this five thousand dollars from Eden Township? Is it similar to us transferring money to the county, or why did this take place?
Um, from what I've heard from, uh, Acting Chief Chapel, uh, Eden Township had CARES Act funds that they needed to use, and they wanted to give some to our fire department, so we accepted it. And now that we have the money, we need to show the expense. And what, um, Chief, uh, Chapel used it for was buying protective gear, protective clothing for our fire department.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other discussion? Can we call a vote on the, uh, suspension of the three reading rule?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Shuck?
Yes. The motion to suspend the three reading rule passes on a vote of six to zero. Can we take a vote on the emergency, please?
There is no emergency, Mr. President.
Oops, I'm sorry. Can we take vote on, uh, passage of twenty dash one forty-two?
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Shuck?
Yes. Legislation for twenty dash one forty-two passes at a vote of six to zero. Any other ordinances?
Well, that concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Scroll down here. All right, is there any other business here to go before the council today? Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, um, I have had a few constituents that have reached out and been a bit concerned about delays in the postal service. Um, while I did assure them that, you know, that is a separate entity from the city of Tiffin, that, that it would be something we were aware of. Um, and I, it seems to be the case, you know, just the perfect storm of needing to get, uh, vaccine shipped out and the holiday rush. Um, but, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you've heard any similar complaints or, or Dale?
Yeah, we've had, I mean, I've had similar complaints, Councilman Gillig, and I know I've experienced the same thing myself. There's just an article I read today in one of, I think it might have been the Cleveland Newspaper, uh, talking about the same things. They actually have semi-trucks of mail and packages lined up at the Cleveland Distribution Center. Uh, there is a photo that went with the article, just trucks lined up as far as the eye could see that are just waiting to get in to be sorted. Um, so yeah, it's a problem across the country right now. Uh, coronavirus coupled with financial issues and it's just a whole mess. Um, but there is absolutely nothing that the, the little city of Tiffin can do to speed the process up. It's a federal issue, the federal post office. Uh, it's unfortunate. I know, you know, it's, it's very minor, but the, the item that I had that was shipped was supposed to be delivered on the fourteenth of December. And all it still says to this day, when I even checked this morning, was, uh, something like delayed or a package will be arriving late. There's not even an update as far as when, uh, the person's going to receive it. So, uh, it's the same problem across the country right now, and there's absolutely nothing we here at Tiffin can do. I guess, call your folks in Washington DC, your congressmen, your senators, and complain to them since it's a federal office.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've heard, uh, similar, uh, concerns from constituents. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Gillig. Was there anything else to go before the council today? Councilman Leppard?
Yeah, ju- just an update for me. I have not received my water bill yet, which was mailed on the ninth of December. I asked for duplicate mailing. Uh, I just received my runkie bill today that was due on the twenty-fourth of December, which was mailed on the ninth, and, uh, I'm still waiting other mail that's, uh, just not here yet. While, as a matter of fact- As a matter of fact, I did have one shipment made to me on the third of December. Two weeks, two weeks after it was mailed, I checked on delivery and found out that, uh, the postal employees in Columbus were having problems with COVID and also, uh, backed up mail supply. My package was shipped out of Springfield, Illinois and got rerouted to Montana. Go figure.
Any other, uh, business or questions from anybody? I'm scrolling through my screen here. Councilman Gilligan?
I apologize for bringing this up at the end of the meeting, but perhaps just to kind of plant the seed, maybe we might want to consider looking into, um, late payment fees for, for sewer, uh, or maybe making contact with Rumpkey. Um, I don't know if that's something we really want to establish as a habit, but, you know, to, to that end, you know, Steve, I think I got my, uh, Rumpkey bill, I believe on the twentieth, and it was due the twenty-fourth. And, you know, I, I still mail it like a, like an old soul that I am, I suppose, though who knows if they ever got that?
Well, there's nothing out. Oh, sorry, City Administrator Thornton?
I wanted to let council know the sewer, uh, revenue manager did have a discussion with me today regarding, uh, the payment of sewer bills and the problems with the mail system. The result of that conversation, I also discussed it with the law director, and we are going to allow some latitude for the receipt of payments on the December bill, and we will monitor this and probably do that with the next billing period as well. Uh, unfortunately, Rumpkey is a different situation. They're a private contractor. We have a contract with them to provide the services to the city, but all of the billing services are completely within their purview and not ours. Uh, I can talk to their regional manager and explain to them the concern, but their decision will be, uh, a business decision that Rumpkey will have to make.
Thank you, City Administrator. Um, if there's no other business here, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I just want to show the group something here real quick. Um, how many of you remember Ken Carmen?
Yep.
Well, my cousin in his room here, I'm getting ready to leave for my flight here in another hour and a half, but they found this on eBay. This is an old picture, an old black and white photo of Ken Carmen when he played football down there for Ohio University. I figured you'd appreciate that, Brent, since you went down there, and I just, my cousins found this on eBay so randomly, I just thought it was a really neat old black and white picture. I, I wouldn't have wanted to line up against him.
That's pretty cool, Mr. President. Uh, Councilman Leopard did have his hand up, Councilman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I can see all the screens at once.
Councilman Leopard?
When you close, uh, we have a, uh, Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee meeting scheduled after the closing of, uh, council meetings.
Okay, um, Aaron, are you, do you have that set up through Zoom, or are you just going to let this meeting kind of flow to the next, or how are you going to do that? I, I, my plane leaves in an hour and a half, I have to go.
Yeah, this meeting just goes right into that, so anyone who's sticking around for it, don't leave. Um, because with Zoom, you have to schedule meetings for certain times, and I didn't know when this would end, when we schedule the next one. So if you're a part of it, don't leave. If you do, you just click the link and can come back into it, or I can let you in, but, uh, have a safe flight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sorry for the shuffling here with my phone. I was sitting there trying to read the emails and then see who's raising their hand, and it, don't have my computer on me, didn't bring it with me, so thank you for everybody for being patient and, uh, um, looking forward to seeing everybody here in a few days or next week when we, uh, have the meeting, but thank you for being patient with me and, uh, um, I'll, I'll talk to everybody soon here, so. Thank you. I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-five. Good night.
Big travels.
I'd like to call, uh, Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee meeting to order. Uh, purpose of the meeting is to discuss the mayor's request for legislation twenty dash sixty-two. Uh, the two thousand and twenty-one pavement repair program. I know we have Matt Watson, uh, with us. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you can bring him in.
On his way in.
Okay.
So he, uh,
With, with Tyler hanging on here, we do have a quorum. We have Leopard, Jones and Tyler, uh, as members of the committee.
All right, he is here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, uh, re- the request for legislation twenty dash sixty-two is the two thousand twenty-one pavement repair program, and the body of the request explains, uh, explains, uh, the intentions very well, but Matt, would you like to, uh, uh, make comments to the committee?
Absolutely. So, um, what we provided you was the two thousand twenty-one pavement repair program list. Um, I will note that if everything goes accordingly, the mayor did very got, very good job explaining it at the council meeting um, last week, but this could be one of three paving projects. So, um, the list that we provided, um, has a base bid estimate of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You will see that that list, um, includes, um, about thirteen streets, I believe. I just counted quickly. Um, we also have a list of five alternate streets, um, so depending how the bids come back, um, we could, uh, slide some alternates in and pave those as well. Um, but in the end, um, it's a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Um, but if all three projects move forward, which I'm pretty, uh, confident that they will, um, we're looking at paving potentially about one point four million dollars, um, in two thousand twenty-one. Um, this year in two thousand twenty, we paved about nine hundred thousand, um, so it's a substantial improvement. Um, and there'll be a lot of paving done. Um, so what we did, um, as we've done in years past, like I said, we set up a paving log, um, where we went out and we analyzed the streets two years ago. We rated all the roads on a one to five, uh, basis. We've come up with estimates for each block of every street within the city of Tiffin. Um, we used that log to project future, uh, paving programs and paving lists, and we used the, the rating system to determine this list, uh, as well as the budget that we had to move forward with. So, um, a lot of the alternate streets, if they don't get performed this year, um, based, being that it's based on that one to five rating system, they're going to be on the base bid more than likely, um, next year. Um, we also, um, you know, we developed this list, um, probably in October. Um, that's our plan moving forward in the city engineer's office. Um, as soon as that current year's paving program is done, um, we want to jump on the ball and get the next year's paving program identified in the fall, um, so that as soon as the budget is passed for the next year, we can move forward with this legislation and solicit bids from contractors to try to get the best, um, cost out there, um, while competition, uh, is, uh, still, um, very much competitive, um, between the contractors and, uh, you know, so that's what we're looking to do, is just get this bid as early as possible to get the best bids as possible, to get the best bang for the taxpayers' dollars.
Matt, your organizational skills are unbelievable. You're, uh, just through the skills that you have developed, uh, through the years, you're saving, saving the city a substantial amount of money. And we thank you for it.
And I do want to make one note, Councilman, uh, Leopard. Um, you'll see that we have Cottonwood Drive, um, listed on the, uh, the base bid, and we also have Birchwood Drive, um, on the alternate bid. Uh, as many people know, and I know Councilwoman Iomato, being in that neighborhood, knows there's been a sinkhole, um, that's been a reoccurring issue, um, at the end of Cottonwood on the curve going into Birchwood. Um, what I've been told is previously, um, that built, that road was built on spoilage, and, um, it was dug out many years ago, um, by a contractor. Um, most of the spoilage was taken out, but they dug down fifteen to twenty feet deep, uh, backfilled with stone, and it was not, um, compacted properly. Um, so it continues to settle. Um, since I've been here in two thousand thirteen, I know the previous city engineer, um, had a overlay placed on, um, that road, um, where it showed settlement, and oh, since that five to six years, it significantly settled more. Um, so our plan, uh, is to try to take care of that issue, um, while we need to put the funds in that area. So I've been working with the, the Public Works Department and Superintendent Brandon Burner, and we came up with a plan, um, that we're going to try to move forward with. Um, we're just thinking that, uh, you know, fix the problem right. Um, basically, we're going to try to bridge that sinkhole. Um, so what we're going to do is, uh, pour a reinforced concrete slab, probably about a foot under the addition, uh, existing pavement and span that area, uh, and then build the road up from there. Um, so that we're, so we, moving forward, we do not continue to, to waste dollars at a ongoing problem that I don't think that we can properly solve without digging back down and redoing the work that was done many years ago. Um, we think we can, the public workforce forces, um, are going to go out there and do all the concrete work themselves. Um, so there might be a, a little bit of a lengthy, uh, road closure, um, associated with that, uh, pavement repair, but it is a residential neighborhood, um, with a means of access out to Miami Street, um, as well. So it shouldn't be a big impact, and hopefully the residents in that neighborhood, um, are very appreciative with the efforts, and I, and I think, uh, this, uh, resolution should, uh, solve the problems for many years ahead of us.
If I remember correctly, I think, uh, when that, uh, when that was dug up right by the curb there, they found the way by mountain spades. And, uh, I do, I do remember, uh, the city making, making repairs along with a contractor there in previous years. So I'm glad to see us going the extra step and, uh, bridging out there and, uh, and, uh, probably some special compacting as well before the concrete.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll dig a little bit below where we're going to bridge and compact that, and then, uh, pour reinforced concrete slab. Uh, probably put six to eight inches of stone above the concrete, and then another six inches of asphalt um, above that, a- and that, that typical section with the asphalt and the stone, um, above the concrete should sustain the load of the, of the traffic that you're going to have on that street. Um, being as a residential street, um, we're basically just going to be dealing with trash trucks and, uh, small delivery trucks. So, um, we're pretty confident that, that it should work, um, at least, uh, more effective, uh, than the approaches that have been done in the past. And, uh, um, that, that stone layer in between, uh, also should create a nice buffer, um, between that concrete and the paving, because it's not always good just to pave right on top of concrete, because, um, as concrete cracks, uh, those cracks reflect up through the asphalt, um, and then you got a maintenance issue on your surface. So, uh, that stone will create that nice buffer layer in between. And, uh, Brandon and myself have talked about it, and I know Brandon has talked about it with, uh, some of the staff out at Public Works. And, uh, we got a plan moving forward, and I think the next step is to reach out to all the utility companies, make sure they know, um, what the plan is, and make sure they don't have any, um, utilities underneath that area that we're looking to do that. So, um, if they do have any utility dig up to repairs in the future, they're not battling with that reinforced concrete slab.
If I remember correctly, uh, gas, gas and water were both in the boulevard and sidewalk area by mountain spades. Any other questions for Matt? I'll entertain motion. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Councilman Leopard. Uh, that was a good explanation, Engineer Watson on Cottonwood. And I believe all these others are just repaving only, and the reason I, and I probably answering my own question, in two thousand nineteen, a gentleman on Henry Street was talking about the sloping of Henry from Hus Street to East Davis Street. And he was saying it slopes so much, water rolls down the hill, goes right into his garage. He was hoping someday to, I don't, I don't mean, surely no engineer, somehow dig that up or refurbish Henry Street to eliminate this water going into his garage and the neighbor's property. So there's no dollars in this proposal for anything like that, correct?
Yeah, I believe, uh, we also talked to that resident. If I, um, I believe they were on the block between, um, they were on the, the, the block just south of Hus Street. Um, between Huss and Tome, if I remember right. And, um, yeah, we spoke with them. We kind of got a plan in place, and, uh, we are try, we try to be as cognizant as possible, not creating any water issues, um, both us and the contractor. Um, we do, we are out on the job site every day, um, when we do pave these roads. So the city engineer's office not only does the design and the bid prep, but we are on the site with the contractor every day, um, addressing concerns and stuff upfront before that base work. So, um, we'll note that and, uh, make sure that we try to take care of the problem and, and resolve the problem if the, if the problem can be resolved with just a resurfacing project.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Jones.
Yes, I will, um, make a motion to... Somebody help me out here. I'll be glad to make the motion with any little guidance.
To approve a request for legislation twenty dash sixty-two.
To approve?
Concerning bidding process.
In the bidding process for mayor's request for legislation twenty dash sixty-two. And you can eliminate the thank you on that.
Uh, Mr. Howard?
Yeah, you, you probably lost your quorum when Tyler left.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a work session. Um, you know, i- I don't know if you, you, you can have a motion and, and approved by the two of you. And, um, uh, but it, you know, it is a more of a, not an official meeting, official action of the committee at this point, with, since you only have two of four, and you don't have a, officially a quorum.
Okay, so we cannot have a legislation prepared at this time?
No, you can. Yeah, you, you couldn't, you know, as you know, individually, you could request that I have, that I prepare legislation for next Monday's meeting, and frankly, I've already prepared it, so it's going to be part of your packet. But, um, you know, your committee can't take any formal action. You can, both of you can agree consensus, if you will, that, uh, the legislation should be prepared for next, uh, Monday's meeting.
Uh, I so agree, and I will authorize the law record for legislation for our first meeting in January. We don't need a second.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there anything further to come before this committee? Uh, Matt?
Um, not really for, for the business of the committee, but I just wanted to say, I thought that was really neat how, you know, uh, Dale and our, and our sewer department had, had already discussed and, and, you know, gotten ahead of the issue even really before I had even thought of it. Um, just, uh, it's pretty neat to see. And also, will we, uh, we'll need to reorganize at the next meeting, correct, Brett? For, uh, council president and pro tem?
Right.
Well, y- yeah, a couple of things. First on the, the sewer, um, bills, um, a couple of things there. Samantha, um, Sugar is a, a great employee that handles, uh, that, uh, the billing collections very well. And, um, it's going to be a lot of work on her part, because she's going to have to go back and, uh, make an adjustments to many. I think it's well over a thousand accounts. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I'm not sure if the system automatically does it, but she's going to have to do some manual adjustments. So there's going to be a lot of extra work on her part, but she was tuned into the issue and, and raised it at the earliest possible time. So, you know, I, I give her a lot of credit for doing her job well. And we do not have a municipal election. Um, you're, e- every two years, you're supposed to reorganize after a municipal election, so it won't be until next year. However, though, you will have a, um, a vacancy in the position of president pro tem when, uh, Councilman Shuff leaves, so you'll need to fill that, uh, position. So there will be, you know, some organizational action that council will need to take, take.
Can we make a motion to send Samantha Sugar a big old Christmas ham or something?
Well, you, you just note that you've got a good employee, I think, and, and I've heard others express that. So I think we have a good employee in that, uh, that department, and, um, you can give her a, a thanks when, whenever you might see her.
And Rumpkey, Rumpkey had no additional, or? And Rumpkey, Rumpkey had no additional or nothing on their bill saying, you know, if you pay after this date, your bill is increased by X amount or whatever. So there wasn't anything on Rumpkey's bills. A lot of company, I've already advised them of uh, five people in, in my neighborhood that has never received a bill as of yet.
And Ben, if, if I can uh, go back to your comment about uh, pay rates for what it's worth, since I know you're a history buff. Um, I'm fifty-nine. My first minimum wage job when I was nineteen, I worked security at the um, Memorial Golf Tournament in Muirfield Village, Jack Nicklaus's tournament. And uh, I got paid three dollars and thirty-five cents an hour. And uh, fortunately, when I was in high school, I had a couple of jobs as a census enumerator in the nineteen eighty census that paid more than minimum wage, so I was well over that. And I also uh, got a job as a, a clerk at the county recorder's office. Uh, that was back when, yeah, you, you, people did favors for each other. And I was a young lucky lad and got a, a, a nice job for a summer at a county recorder's office for some political work, and then I also helped out with her, her election. I was kind of a young Aaron Mons. Not quite as ambitious as Aaron, but I was in that same vein. But the other part of my work history is that uh, my first job was when I was in fourth grade, passing papers. Back then, paper boys were literally young boys. And I, I passed papers when I was in fourth and fifth and into sixth grade. You know, it wasn't people driving around with cars back then. We used to lug them around neighborhoods. And it was the original gig economy, because they made it very clear to you, you are not an employee. You are an independent contractor, and you have to make sure that you have money to pay every week for these papers that we give you. And uh, yet they were, they came down on us if there was any complaints whatsoever. So they definitely controlled us. But they made it clear, you know, we're not paying you a wage. You know, you just gotta take whatever might be left over at the end of the week. So it was a good, it was a great uh, experience for capitalists in that work at a very young age. The gig economy back before you even heard that terminology.
I had a, I had the Cleveland Plain Dealer paper out, and the Sunday paper was always believe it or not, six hundred pages. I mean, it was, it was big. And uh, we delivered the Sunday paper in Attica out of the trunk of an Ash Metropolitan. And uh, I had, I think I had about a hundred, hundred papers for Sunday and only like twenty during the week. But out of those hundred papers, uh, forty of them went to one location, a restaurant in Attica.
And where was this grocery store that had you working as an indentured servant?
Uh, that was the old Rebel Food Market. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, Brent Howard bought the owner of that um, grocery store bought his house at four hundred Second Morris Street, am I right?
Really? You know more than I do.
Yeah. His name was in the paper every week for some, something in the police blotter. Uh, as a matter of fact, the employees, when I think I was probably a junior in high school, uh, we had taken to court because they failed to pay any of us overtime. And uh, in the summers, I would work, I would work as much as eighty hours per week at the grocery store. And uh, I was able to buy a car when I was sixteen years old. It's only a one-year-old car, you had to boot, but had to borrow money for the insurance payment. Paid cash for the car.
And of course, we all know Mayor Mons started in the sporting goods department at Walmart and umpired uh, Little League games.
Sure did. Back in the day.
Bridget, what was your first job, being the, the youngster here with all the savvy veterans?
Um, hmm, I don't think I have any cool stories like you guys. Um, I think, I worked at a heating uh, company. I worked in the factory um, in the summers in college, but uh, and there was no air conditioning. But it was um, it was good money, so.
Councilman Leopard, I just want to thank you for joining us today, even though you're ill. So we really appreciate it. You saved us having to schedule a couple of extra meetings. So thank you. Hope you feel better soon.
My pleasure.
Okay, I'm going to get out of here, guys, since we're not
Saying goodnight too.